Welcome back, esoteric dubitism here. Glad to be back to my studies. Had a tish above, the fast day, a few days yesterday, and Sabbath. And it's good to be thinking about this important issue. I did a lot of studying into it last week. You know, I was looking back at like to review what I had done to watch for today. And it's over 20 hours already. And I've probably got at least another 10, 20 hours coming. And it's a mess looking at this because there really is no clean way to put together this topic, you know, consciousness studies. So you're glad to put more work into it and hopefully clarify these ideas, see the historical thought and experts, what they thought on the issue, and the current state of technology and science. That was my goal from the beginning, and that's still my goal right now. And obviously, there's a lot to it, and we're not going to be able to do everything. But I do think we have a good overview of the philosophy of mind, the historic, you know, backdrops to the ancients, the history of science in general, philosophy of science, philosophy, till you come up with these theories like evolution and anatomy. And then we're looking at how the body works with modern medicine. And the goal is to understand consciousness. And honestly, I really don't think my consciousness comes from my brain. And in reading all this stuff, I had a good education relatively before. And I had thought about these things many times. And I almost went to medical school. I took advanced college courses. And I never thought that my consciousness came from my brain, nor do I even necessarily think it's localized in my head, that it might be global. And but it is interesting to examine the latest understandings of the brain. And obviously, if there is a soul, there has to be some sort of interlay. And a lot more is understood about the brain. And we're going to particularly go into the senses today because we know relatively the brain is largely for the control of the sense perception. And that could be very clearly demonstrated by anatomy, by dissection, looking at a brain. You could see like the nervous cords from the eyes switching sides, entering opposite sides to the back part of the brain, the auditory stuff that we're going to go over today, and plus the motor control. And even just a thought experiment, like what happens when we do a simple action, like try to move something, you know, just to pick up and hit the click on the mouse? What goes on in the brain? Is that actually physical, this decision-making part? Is it, okay, you heard me mention the idea, and so, okay, I'm going to do it? Is the decision that actually comes to control the physical movement coming from the brain, the body, or possibly from some other thing that we'll call the soul that's immaterial? And as a science, not even looking for the answer to that. They're trying to understand it from the material perspective. And they're not really successful, as you could see from what I've shown already. Although they have discovered quite a bit of fascinating stuff about the brain. I hope to see more. So let me get into, yeah, I do kind of want to clear up my desk and get back to my other stuff. So this was an interesting thing I found on your perspectives on neo-Darwinism, materialism, religion, New Age, or follow Jew, Jesus, and from a millennial, kind of like spiritual. It's 168 panels and tries to go over like the history of the world and attach the Bible and spiritual significance and filling in the gaps in the science explanation. And he covers all the most recent discoveries of physics and science in, you're trying to give spiritual explanations. And it could be to some extent, this is what I'm going to be trying to do. So I'll put this in the link. I flipped through it today. I've had it on my screen for a few days. And that's what, so I'm once I, thanks for being here, Blue. I might do a Ask the Rabbi tonight or tomorrow if people are interested in the new nation-state law in Israel. Yeah, so I want to finish up with the science aspect. And then, and then I'm going to turn over to your more spiritual aspects. And you're so I want to give an overview of what the atheistic science says they know, what scientifically, how much they could say they could know. And then I'm going to start turning towards esoteric understandings. So let's jump right in. I pulled, I got my PowerPoints here on Sense Perception. And you know, just an overview, we've went over this a few times. I've been reading more. And I encourage people to study this. You know, probably you've had this in basic biology going back to a little kid. But the reality of consciousness, you need to clearly understand sense perception. You want to understand the brain. One of the definite things the brain does do is sense perception. So this one even gives a quote from The Matrix. "Perception is the construction of a model of the environment. Why do we take perception for granted? Nature of the model constructed in perception, a symbolic description or representation. Perception really is a difficult and impressive accomplishment. The physiology approach to perception, the perceptual process is a causal chain. Parallel approaches to perception from studies of visual phenomenon or visual performance and from physiology and anatomy. Perception is the inverse problem. Mars three levels of analysis, hardware, algorithmic, and computational." So some themes of the world as we perceive it is an internal neural representation or model that we construct and rely on. Why do we take perception for granted? If the model is to be useful, we have to take it as for real. That's why we evolved the ability to make it. Perceptual ability is universal, not very much individual variation. Perception generally requires no conscious effort unlike other challenging cognitive accomplishments. "Nature of the model constructed in perception is symbolic description or symbolic representations, a point-to-point projection preserving the information in the stimulus is not enough, the homunculus fallacy. Evidence that perception really is a difficult and impressive accomplishment. It takes up nearly half of the brain for vision alone. Infants spend the first year of life mainly learning it. Engineers can barely achieve even the most primitive symbolic description of artificial vision systems." You know, what do we really see? What's really out there? And just for the terms of ideas, from a true scientific understanding of what do we really know is out there? And Plato's cave analogy is still pretty relevant till today. You think what's really out there, it's not what we see, it's not the vision we have in our head that pretty much has very little to do with what the reality of what is out there is actually. Although what we do see is quite impressive. And we're going to look at some modern papers on the brain as a predictive machine also. But the cave analogy is still pretty powerful in the same way. We really have no, very little clue of what is in the physical world, even with all our scientific accomplishments. "Physiological approach to perception, the perception process is a causal chain." You know, Descartes. So looking for stages of processing. And you know, we're going to get into the anatomy. "Your parallel approaches to perception from studies of visual phenomenon or visual performance, psychophysics, and from physiology and anatomy. The physiology approach to perception, perceptual process is a causal chain. Perception is an inverse problem, assumptions, natural constraints. In Mars, three levels of analysis, computation, algorithm, hardware." So perception as an inverse problem. The Ames Room example. "Without binocular vision, a projection still happens, but now it requires solution of an inverse problem. What object size and distance produce the given image? Given one value, we must infer two. The mapping from objects to images is many to one, the restoration of a definite object distance. In perception resolves some of this uncertainty. Correctly, if the inverse problem is solved correctly, incorrectly, otherwise, irrational choice. To attack the inverse problem, choose the most plausible of the alternatives. Basion framework is a mathematical representation for understanding large analysis, and we're going to be looking at Bayesian framework quite a bit. Would simply be the more statistically likely, given the context as we know it. Although Hoffman says this is circular logic." You've seen this picture a few times, the fake room. Or you know, the mind bender, its perception, your examples that show the flaws in human perceptions, puzzles. So here's Newton, 1962. "Are not the species image in modern terminology of objects seen with both eyes united, where the optic nerves meet before they come into the brain? The fibers on the right side and the nerves on uniting there. And after union, going hence into the brain nerve, which is on the right side of the head, the optic tract and the present usage and the fibers on the left side of both nerves uniting in the same place. And after union, going into the brain and the nerve optic tract, which is on the left side of the head and these two nerves meeting in the brain in such a manner that the fibers make but one entire species or pitcher, half of which on the right side of the sensorium comes from the right side of both eyes, through the right side of the both optic nerves, to the place where the nerves meet. And from thence on the right side of the head into the brain. And the other half of the left side of the sensorium comes in manners from the left side of both eyes, from the optic nerves of such animals, and look the same way with both eyes. Meet before they come into the brain, but the optic nerve of such animals do not look the same way with both eyes. Do not meet, am I rightly informed?" So it is Newton trying to understand vision. Obviously, he had anatomy good enough to have seen the optic nerve. "So when perceptual constancy is achieved, instead of failing as it does from the Ames Room, the result is closer correspondence of isomorphism between the state of the external environment and the perception impression of it closer than the corresponding between the external environment and the sensory stimulus through which we know it. Action depends on such simple and orderly mapping. Prediction, generalization, sample pitch and frequency, period. Failure of perceptual isomorphism in intermediate representations. Perception is a model with neural representations of data which needn't look like the model just as scientific theory should be a model of reality and therefore isomorphic with reality in some sense. Yet neither the theory nor the reality it describes has any similarity to the data as such." Okay, so just a nice overview on perception. And we're going to keep on delving in deeper, and we're going to look into, you know, the brain as a the brain as a prediction machine. We see that the brain, almost half of the brain is dedicated to the sense of vision. So when we presuppose like that when we think it comes from the brain, reality, the science is very weak behind that. And it's unlikely that thinking even derives from the brain. And we're going to see like the memory, memory, there's decent evidence that, you know, memory, possibly memory of vision or what the memory is, what memories are in our brain, do come in the brain. But the majority, like half of the brain is designed around this function of vision. And obviously, you'd see that's pretty important. And you know, so let's look at the sense of vision. "The human eye is the organ which gives us the sense of sight and allowing us to observe and learn more about the surrounding world than we do with any of the other four senses. We use our eyes in almost every activity we perform, whether reading, working, watching television, or writing. The eye is able to detect bright light or dim light, but it cannot sense objects when light is absent. Seventy percent of all sensory receptors are in the eye. Vision is a photoreceptor sense. The adult eye is a sphere of about one inch, two and a half centimeters in diameter. Only one sixth eye's anterior surface can normally be seen. Protection of the eye, the rest of the eye is enclosed in a bony orbit. A cushion of fat surrounds most of the eye. Two basic structures, the eyeball and the accessory structures." So we've seen this, the sclera and the cornea, and the vascular tunic, the iris, the cellular body, the choroid, the retina. Here we got the fovea, the optic disc, virtuous humor. "Pupil is the central opening of the iris, regulates the amount of light entering the eye during closed vision. In bright light, pupils constrict. Distant vision in dim light, pupils dilate. Changes in emotion state, pupils dilate when the subject matter is appealing or requires problem-solving skills. Pupil dilation in constriction through a circular muscle. The lens, biconvex crystal-like structure, held in place by suspensory ligament attached to the cellular body. Light passing through the convex lens is bent so that the rays converge to a focal point. When a convex lens forms an image, the image is upside down and reversed right to left. Retina extends anterior only to the cellular body. Contains receptor cells, rods, and cones. Signals leave the retina towards the brain through the optic nerve. No photoreceptor cells are at the optic disc or blind spot." Some nice pictures, encourage people to learn more about this. Rods, the visual receptors. Hundreds of times more sensitive to light than cones. Provides vision in poor light, produce colorless, lack of light vision. Nerve fibers converge, so when pulses produce more general outlines. Concentration of rods increases in areas away from fovea centrals. This means that your peripheral vision is better in the dark than your direct vision. "Visual receptors, cones, provides vision in good light, provides color and sharp vision. Nerve fibers do not converge as much, so impulses produce more detailed images. Concentration of cones greatest in fovea centrals. Concentration of cones decreased in areas away from fovea centrals. Fovea centrals area of the retina with only cones found laterally to each blind spot. This is the area of greatest visual acuity or point of sharpest version." So encourage people to look more into this. You know, three types of cones, different cones sensitive to different wavelengths. Color blindness is the result of lack of one type of cone. See you have the blue, green, and red cones. "Visual pigments, rods contain rodopsin, visual purple. Light causes rodopsin to change shape and release opsin, which acts as an enzyme and further reactions. Net result is hyperpolarization directly proportional to the intensity of light stimulus. Rodopsin replenishes in dim light, replenished in dim light. In dim light, a rodopsin replenished eye is said to be dark-adapted. Can see in the dark. Cones contained iodopsin, a group of pigment sensitive to light waves of different frequencies." You know, so the rod is in between the blue and green. Eye cavity, the internal space, the eye is subdivided by the lens into two separate cavities, the anterior cavity and the posterior cavity. The anterior cavity is the space anterior to the lens and posterior to the cornea. The iris of the eye subdivides the anterior cavity further into two chambers. Anterior chamber is between the iris and cornea. Posterior chamber is between the lens. So posterior cavity is posterior to the lens and anterior to the retina. Transparent, gelatinous, virtual body which completely fills the space between the lens and the retina. The physiology of the eye, light waves from the object enter the eye first through the cornea. The light then proceeds to the pupil. Fluctuations in incoming light changes the size of the pupil. When the light entering the eye is bright enough, the pupil will constrict due to the pupil light response. The light continues through the virtuous humor, then ideally back to a clear focus on the retina behind the virtuous, small central area of the retina is the macula, which provides the best vision of any location in the retina. Within the layers of the retina, light impulses are changed into electric signals. Then they are sent through the optic nerve along the visual pathway to the occipital cortex. Here, the electric signals are interpreted or seen by the brain as visual image. Actually, we do not see with our eyes, but rather with our brains. Our eyes merely are the beginnings of the visual process. So light enters the eyes, triggers photoreceptors in the rods and cones in the back of the retina. Chemical reactions in turn activate bipolar cells. And bipolar cells then activate the ganglion cells, the axins, which converge to form the optic nerve. This nerve transmits information to the visual cortex in the brain's occipital lobe." So here we have eight layers of the retina to the optical nerve. More pictures. Hope to study this more. "So to see everything clearly, three processes must take place. The refraction of bending of light by the lens and cornea, the change in shape of the lens, accommodation, and the constriction of the narrowing of the pupil. Refraction, imagines focus on the retina inverted upside down. They also undergo light to left reversal. Seventy-five percent of the refraction occurs at the cornea. Twenty-five percent occurs at the lens, which also changes the focus to view either distant or near objects." So you have refraction abnormally, myopia nearsightedness. Results from a lens that is too strong or a long eyeball when the image focuses in front of the retina, corrected by a concave or lens. And they have hyperopia or physighted, results from a lens that is too lazy or too short eyeball when image focuses behind the retina, corrected by a convex lens. So accommodation, when the eye is focused on close object, the lens becomes more curved, causing greater refraction of the light rays. The increase in the curvature of the lens is called accommodation. So you have near and far accommodation. When viewing distant objects, the cellular muscles relax and the lens is flatter because the taut zonial fibers are stretching in all directions. When viewing close objects, the cellular muscles contract, which pulls the cellular process towards the lens. This releases tension on the lens and zonular fibers. The lens is elastic and then becomes more spherical. So you can move about a millimeter. "Constriction of the pupil. It's a narrowing of the diameter of the hole through which light enters the eye due to contraction of the circular muscle of the iris. This occurs automatically during accommodation to prevent light from entering at the periphery of the lens. The pupil also constricts in bright light." "Visual pathway. Axins of the retinal ganglion cells, and one eye exit the eyeball at the optic disc and from the optic nerve on that side. At the optic chiasm, axins of the temporal half at each retina do not cross, but continue directly to the lateral geniculate nucleus and the thalamus on the same side. Axins from the nasal half of each retina cross the optic chiasm and continue to the opposite hypothalamus. Each optic tract consists of crossed and uncrossed axins that project from the optic chiasm to the thalamus on one side. Axon collateral extends to the midbrain to govern pupil constriction and to the hypothalamus to govern patterns of sleep and other circumday and rhythms relevant to light and darkness. Axins of the melic neurons from the optic radiations and project to the primary visual area of the cortex on the same side." Nice diagrams. So optic nerve, cutting at the optic nerve causes blindness in the ipsilateral same-side eye, thus, cutting the left optic nerve causes blindness in the left eye. It's all sensory information coming from that eye is lost because it cut, the cut occurs before any fibers cross the optic chiasm. The optic chiasm, cutting the optic chiasm causes heteronomous, both eyes, bitemporal hemonopia. In other words, all information is lost from fibers that cross. Less information from the temporal visual field from both eyes is lost because these fibers cross at the optic chiasm. The optic tract. Cutting the optic tract causes homonous correlateral hemonopia as shown in the figure. Cutting the left optic tract results in loss of the temporal visual field from the right eye and the loss of the nasal field, visual field from the left eye. In genicular tract, cutting the genicular tract causes homonous contrilateral hemonopia with muscular sparing, the visual field from the macula is intact. Macular sparing occurs because lesions on the visual cortex do not destroy all neurons that represent the macula. The visual cortex, the largest system in the human brain, is responsible for processing the visual image. It lies at the occipital lobe of the brain above the cerebellum. The region that receives information directly from the LGN is called the primary visual cortex, also called V1 and strike cortex. Visual information then flows through secondary visual areas. These areas include V2, V3, V4, and the area of V5 MT." Nice diagrams. Okay, test of visual acuity. Clear-focused image requires adaptation on the focal length of the optic lens by alteration of its curvature to suit the varying of distance. It is a measure of the smaller retinal images which can be appreciated. By using Schellen's chart, we can record, recode the visual acuity for distance and for near. So anyone's an eye test, seen these before, 2020. "Visual acuity test is a measure of how well we see or the sharpness and clarity of your vision. Your eye doctor will ask you to read letters on a chart while standing 20 feet away. The smallest letters you are able to read will be recorded as your acuity. Vision acuity may written as 2020 or 66 if your vision is normal. If your vision is reduced, it might be recorded as less than 2020, such as 2100. If you have 2100 vision, it means that you must be as close as 20 feet to see what a person with normal vision can see at 100 feet. Someone with 2060 vision would need to move up 20 feet away to read what a person with normal vision could read from 60 feet away." "Normal visual field extends 160 degrees horizontally and 130 degrees vertically." So directly facing, so an experiment to test that. So you have ocular alignment, another experiment to test ocular alignment. Look at the muscles. Nice ways to test red and green. "Pulmonary examination examines the pupil for the shape and symmetry. The patient fixes the eye at a distant point straight ahead. Bring a bright torchlight from the side to shine on the pupil. Look for constriction in the pupil, direct light reflex. Further constriction of the opposite pupil, consensual light reflex." "When the patient's vision is fixed on a distant point, present an object about 15 centimeters in front of the eye and ask the patient to focus on it. Look for pupil constriction and convergence, accommodation reflex." Okay, so there's a nice quick overview, your not-so-quick overview of vision. Hope people are, you know, learning, gaining from this. Check my sound real quick. Okay, so let's continue. Let's do psychology of perception. Introduction to hearing. Hearing, what is it good for? Remote sensing, not restricted like visual field can sense objects not visible. So the example, you're a tree in the forest, physical signal, but no perception. One hand clapping, no physical symbol, no perception. Separate physical quantity from perceptual quality. Sound is the perceptual correlator, the physical changes in air pressure. Physical attributes associated with sound. You have loudness, amplitude, a height of pressure wave, pitch, frequency of times per second, measured usually in hertz as a pressure wave repeats itself. Sound quality, you have pure tones, single frequencies rarely exist in the real world. Complex tones, multiple frequencies due to resonance. Air pressure causes reverberations like tuning forks. You'd be like plucking at the string on a guitar. The A, for example, fundamental frequency, 440 hertz, which is cycles per second. Harmonics, reverberation at multiples of the fundamental. Like for A, creates fullness of complex sounds. Timber is a relative amplification of harmonics. The human ear, it's the outer ear focusing on sounds, resonance amplifies. 2,000 to 500 hertz rains converts from air to mechanical vibrations. The middle air amplification, fluid denser than air. Focus vibrations onto staples oval window. Increased leverage from ossicles. The inner ear, sensory transduction, physical to neural energy. Fluid pressure changes, bending of hair cells. So transduction, the inner ear, you have the cochlea coiled and liquid filled. Three layers, cochlear partition, contains the organ of Corti, the organ of Corti, cilia hairs, cell hairs between basal and detectorial membranes. Transduction, movement of the cilia between membranes. The transduction, you have bending, physical energy converted to neural signals. It bends in one direction, depolarization, more likely to fire other directions, hyperpolarization, less likely to fire. Vision, you got pitch, identification, and location. Vision, you got pitch, identification and location. Pitch, neuro firing signal difference pitches, timing codes, place codes, so you have temporal coatings, idea different frequencies signaled by rate of neuronal firing, hair cell response bend one direction, depolarization other direction, hyperpolarization resulting in bursting pattern of neural responses related to frequency of oscillation. Problems with temporal coding, single neuron can't fire at the rate necessary to present higher tones, max neuron firing is five to eight hundred times per second, so you have the volley principle, no single neuron represents a frequency, coding across many neurons with staggered firing rates. So you have evidence of phase locking, different neurons respond to different peaks, not every peak, pull across multiple neurons to represent high frequencies. So phase coding, related to doctrine of specific nerve energies, so pitch activation in different places in auditory system, frequency specific, tonopathy cochlear brainstring cortical stimulate these regions should result in pitch perception. Place coding starts in the cochlea, frequency response pattern is different across the basilar, peak resonance for high frequencies is the rigid stapes, peak resonance for lows of the elastic apex. So von Bikeski studied basilar membrane in cadavers, base more narrow and stiffer, apex wider and more flexible, observe traveling waves, different frequencies result in waves with different envelopes, you the higher frequency peak closer to the base, lower frequency peak closer to the apex, thus F related to place where peak fluctuation occurs. Frequency tuning, neural place coding, tonapical arrangement of hair cell nerves, different nerves, innervate different parts, field basal membrane allows for place code for frequency. And Fourier decomposition, if anyone, you know, took advanced mathematics remembers Fourier transform, basal membrane acts as a frequency analyzer, breaks down complex frequency inputs into constituent pure tone components, which is the basis of what Fourier transforms do. So auditory masking, presence of certain tones, decreased perception of nearby tones, similar frequency results in greater masking, asymmetry in spread of masking consistent with basal vibration overlap. Mystery of the missing fundamental, you have 400 hertz plus the harmonics, sounds like 400 hertz with a complex timber, in what if you remove the fundamental 400 in seeing the perceived pitch doesn't change hence the missing fundamental, harmonic structure determines perceived pitch, not what is present on basal membrane, what we hear is not what the basal membrane tells us but what our brain does. Here, so think of the example of the telephone. So you got a decibel scale, important for understanding, so autoacoustics emissions, talking ears, ears don't only receive sounds, they make them, discovered in nineteen seventy-eight, tiny microphones occur spontaneously and also in response to sound, is like your ears are talking back, created by movement of outer hair cells, part of auditory sensitivity in movement. It allows tuning curves to be so narrow, hearing impairments often start with loss of this OHC function. Auditory localization, where is sound coming from, distance, elevation, azimuth, location not nearly as precise as vision, localized within two to three and a half degrees in front of head, twenty degrees behind head, suggest important role of vision, you to tune auditory localization. So why is auditory localization not obvious, vision stimulate different proto receptors in eye, audition, no such separation of sound sources on sensory surface, sources combined to equally stimulate ear receptors. Why have two ears? So azimuth, internal between ears, time difference, air pressures change at very slow relative to the speed of light, can induce perception of location by varying the interoral time difference, interlevel difference, amplitude decreases with distance, head cast sound, acoustic shadow, reduced amplitude due to reflection, measures of tiny microphones, frequency dependent, greater shadow for higher frequency. So you have elevation, the interoral time difference and the interoral level difference are not very useful, use spectral cues. Distance, a close distance is less than the ear, less than a meter, interoral level differences can discriminate near and far, at very close distances, interoral level determinations very large, up to twenty decimals. What's that going to do for us at far distances, we are very poor judges of unfamiliar sounds, suggested sound serves as a signal for visual search, use sound levels for familiar sources, frequency auditory atmospheric haze, assumption of high frequency, sound muffled, auditory parallax, sound moves faster across ears, in near relation to far distances. So brain bases for localization, you have the detectors, brainstem superior ovular nucleus, primary auditory cortex, coincidence detection, neurons fire maximally when signals arrive at spacetime, at same time, thus coincidence, accidental distance create input delays. Auditory scene analysis, how do we segregate different sounds being produced by many sources simultaneously, how do we tell what frequencies belong to what source, like the cocktail party, don't perceive an unrecognized jumble of frequencies, so how do we segregate information that's belonging to distinct auditory objects? So principles auditory grouping like Gestalt visual principles, auditory stream segregation, similarity timber, location, pitch, time. Audiovisual interactions, location and pitch, visual capture of sound, location, ventral locism effect, pitch, McGurk effect, visual information is integrated with audition, creates focused auditory visual perception. Audiovisual interception, location and pitch is much more than pressure level changes. Okay, very interesting, so we're going to be moving into this concept of the brain is a prediction machine, that you would see that your vision is the main part of, vision's going to be the main part of the brain and then auditory might be one of the second most biggest parts of the brain and that will lead to our perception and saying what does the brain do, certainly the brain is involved with taking these external perceptions of the outside world and translating that into something, but is that something that when we perceive in consciousness, something within the brain or something exterior to the brain? And so we're putting this all together and, you know, so we're coming at this at a higher level than we had before. So let's turn to optics and, you know, so they're saying what's actually out there? You know, we have our body and we know the external world and we're looking at, you know, sound waves and light and how our brain transforms that information into something A perception of what the immediate world around us looks like based on a combination of our So, you know, we'll have to return to optics, you know, what is light, you know, how do we, you know, just understand how the eye does it or, you know, how science understands it. So quick overview, you know, we'll do Maxwell's equation, the wave equation. Internal reflection, interference, diffraction, laser, nonlinear optics, ultrafast optics, the Fourier transform and its key role in optics. So optics in ancient history, mirror was discovered in workers' quarters near the tomb of Perro, Sisostres nineteen hundred B.C. Ancient Greeks, burning glass mentioned by Aristophanes law of refraction, cat optics by Euclid, refraction in water mentioned by Plato in the Republic, but they thought the eye emits rays that reflect off objects, so ancient Greek, ancient light weapons, early Greek and Roman historians report that Archimedes equipped several hundred people with metal mirrors to focus sunlight onto Roman warships in the Battle of Syracuse. Although historians, scientists question the story. Optics in the Middle Ages, Alizan, Arab scientist, studied spherical and parabolic mirrors, Alizan correctly proposed that the eye passed to receive the light from reflected, from objects rather than emanating light rays themselves, also explained the laws of reflection and refraction by the slower movement of light through denser substances. To the Enlightenment in Europe, Hans Lippershey applied for a patent on the Galilean telescope in sixteen oh eight, Galileo used one to look at our moon Jupiter and its moons and the sun. Kepler discovered total internal reflection, showed why telescopes work, developed a first order theory of geometric, geometrical optics, discover the small angle approximation to the law of reflection, refraction. Willabrod Snell, Willabrod Snell discovered the law of refraction now named after him, Snell's law. Where N times the sine of the one angle equals N times the sine of the reflected, refracted angle. Seventeenth century optics, the current reason that light must be like sound, so we model light as pressure variations in a medium, an ether, Robert Hooke studied color inference between thin films and developed the first wave theory of light. Christian Hoijens, Hoijens extended the wave theory of optics, realized that light slowed down on entering dense media, explained polarization, double refraction, Hoijens principle says the way propagates as if the wavefront were composed of an array of point sources each emitting a spherical wave. Isaac Newton procured mea, mea triangle glass prism and tried their way to celebrate phenomenon of colors. After remaining ambivalent for many years, he eventually concluded that it was evidence for a particle theory of light. Eighteenth and nineteenth century optics, you get Euler, Young and Fresnel, Leonard Euler further developed the wave theory and designed achromatic lenses by combined lenses of different materials, Thomas Young explained inference and colored fringes and showed that light was transverse wave, Fresnel did experiments to establish the wave theory and derived expressions for reflected and transmitted waves. James Clerk Maxwell unified electricity and magnetism with his now famous equations and showed that light is an electromagnetic wave. Maxwell's equations simplified to the wave equation for the electric field, which has a simple sine wave solution, the same is true for a magnetic field. Light is an electromagnetic wave, the electric E and the magnetic B fields are in phase, the electric field and magnetic field are the propagation direction are all perpendicular. Mikkelsen and Morley attempted to measure the earth's velocity with respect to the ether and found it to be zero, effectively disapproving, disproving the existence of the ether. Or possibly disproving that the earth is moving. Albert Einstein showed that light is a phenomenon of empty space, has velocity that's constant independent of observer velocity, both a wave and a particle. The interaction of light and matter, light excites atoms which then emit more light. A crucial issue is the relative phase of the incident light in this re-admitted light, if these two waves are a hundred eighty degrees out of phase, destructive inference occurs and the beam will be attenuated, absorption, if they are ninety degrees out of phase, the speed of light changes reflection, refraction. So absorption of light varies massively, so you can look at the penetration depth into water dependent on wavelength, to a climeter, to just a few millions of a meter, so water is, water is clear and visible but not in other spectral regions. Notice that the penetration depth varies by over ten orders of magnitude. The variation of the reflective index of wavelength dispersion causes the beautiful prismatic effects we know and love. Prisms disperse white light into its various colors, rainbows result from reflection and reflection of sunlight in water droplets, note that there can be two rainbows and the top one is inverted. There are many interesting optic effects in real life. Interesting question is what happens to light when it encounters a surface in an oblique angle, light can be completely transmitted or completely reflected, total internal reflection is the basis of optic fibers, a billion dollar interest, industry. Light beams can interfere with each other, two point sources, different separations, note the different patterns, constructive and destructive interference, the idea is central to many laser techniques such as holography, ultrafast photography and acoustical optic modulators, test of quantum mechanics also use it, light beams can be intentionally made to interface with each other using a partially reflecting mirror which we can split a beam into two. If we then combine the two beams, the relative phase matters, the above Sagnac interferometer measures rotation. Fourier decomposing function plays a big role in optics, here we write a square wave as the sum of sine waves of different frequency. Fourier transform is perhaps the most important equation in science, converts a function of time to one of frequency and converting back uses almost the same formula. Diffraction, light bends around corners is called diffraction, the light pattern emerging from a single small rectangular opening, diffraction pattern far away is the two D Fourier transform of the slit transmission versus position. So light is not only wave but also particle, photographs taken in dimmer light look grainier, we will detect very weak light, we find is made up of particles, we call them photons. Laser is a medium that stores energy surrounded by two mirrors, photons entering the medium undergo stimulated emission, as a result, the intensity exiting from the medium succeeds, exceeds that entering it, partial reflecting output mirrors less some light out. Electromagnetism is linear, the principle of superposition holds, this means that light beams pass through each other without affecting each other. Nonlinear optics produce many exotic effects, sending high intensity infrared laser light into a crystal yield, this display of green light, nonlinear optics allow us to change the color of the light beam to change its shape in space and time and to test the fundamental principles of quantum mechanics, the ultrasound label, laser pulses are the shortest events ever created, the pulse is only four point five times ten to the negative fifteen seconds, four point five femtoseconds. Okay, so quick overview of light, I've been taking this course right now, I'm in lecture history of mathematics and, you know, because this, I'm on lecture twenty-one halfway through, the great professor, history of mathematics, I encourage people who want to learn more about this topic to also look into the history of mathematics because, you know, generally the history of mathematics has been the backbone to science until today and when we look at the most modern understandings of what's happening in the brain, we're essentially going to be looking at the use of different mathematical techniques. So now let's look at memory. So as we say, you know, the brain certainly has something to do with sense perception, over half the brain is related to sense perception, about half the brain just the vision alone. Memory is dispersed throughout the brain, but it's unclear exactly, you know, how that, less so than the sense perception which is the best understood of any of them and then also we have motor control through the, of the outer body through signals from the brain. So let's look at memory in the human brain. So it's from a class. Neurons and memory, connection between neurons change based on experience, brain is less hardwired than we used to believe, Lashley provided evidence of plasticity in monkeys in the nineteen twenties but is not widely accepted until the sixties, neuroplasticity is the fundamental property of brain nervous systems, capacity of nervous systems to modify its organization, changes in structure and function as a result of experience, changes largely within the synapses. Synaptic changes that could store memories, current dominant theory of long-term potentiation, persistent increase in synaptic strength following high frequency simulation, the molecular and cellular changes mediating the induction of long-term potentiation in the hippocampus are widely considered to provide a basis for memory. Not all learning related changes involve changes in synaptic strength, neurogenesis, new evidence suggests that new neurons are formed in some regions of the brain. Changes in neuronal excitability, changes in the firing threshold. Changes in neuronal excitability, changes in the firing threshold. So the brain networks of neurons, there are many steps between synaptic change and behavioral memory. Lots of interesting questions, does the memory reside in single neurons or in networks of neurons? Are all the networks the same or the differences? Do different regions of the brain deal with different kinds of things? The brain vital statistics weighs about three pounds, size of about a medium cauliflower, has about a hundred billion neurons. Synapses. About a hundred trillion. So your neurons are connected into network of neurons. You have the four lobes, the occipital with vision, parietal sensation, temporal memory, memory and hearing. And frontal reasoning and memory. So other crucial parts, the limbic system controls emotion and instinctive behavior, includes the hippocampus and parts of the cortex. Thalamus receives sensory and limbic information and sends to cerebral cortex. Hypothalamus monitors certain activities and controls body's internal clock. Hippocampus where short term memories are converted to long term memories. So networks and neurons hold memories. Memory consolidation involves interaction among neural systems as well as cellular changes within specific systems. In that the amygdala is critical for modulating consolidations in other brain regions. The brain memory, so where is it? Multiple brain regions are involved in encoding as showed from fMRI scans. Retrieval from different parts could include visual auditory or spatial. So multiple brain regions are involved in encoding for recalling pictures, the right prefrontal cortex and para hippocampal cortex in both hemispheres are activated for recalling words. The left prefrontal cortex and left para hippocampal cortex are activated consolidation of memory involves the hippocampus, but the hippocampal system does not store long term memory. Long term memory storage occurs in the cortex near where the memory was first processed and held in short term memory. Seven sins of memory hippocampus and nearby structures related to the sins of transience. Parts of the frontal road related to transience, but even more central to absent mindedness and misattribution and possibly suggestibility, the area near front of temporal lobe related to blocking the amygdala related to persistence, not much is known about bias. The hippocampus important for a formation of new episodic memories, important for encoding perceptual aspects of memories. Now events places and stimuli important for declarative memory, especially as part of medial temporal lobe supported by case of. So the hippocampus recollection versus knowing familiarity. Showing the, the study has shown the hippocampus is selectively involved in R not with K. Let's see what these stand for. Using process disassociation procedures showed similar pattern. So dying, dying cephalic amnesia, damage to the medial thalamus or mammillary nuclei. Medio temporal lobe amnesia, damage to the hippocampal formation, uncus amygdala and surrounding cortical areas. Other implicated regions include the anterior lateral temporal lobe and frontal lobes. Amnesia, loss of memory ability, usually due to lesion or surgical removal of various parts of the brain relatively spared performance in other domain, the pure amnesia is relatively rare. Three different kinds of classification based on the source of the disease, location of the area damage and the functional deficit. Mixways of category amnesia causes some difficulties. So you either retrograde lots of memories from events prior to the damage or antigrade loss of ability to store new memories or events after damage. Amnesia can be caused by Chorstov syndrome, traumatic brain injury, concussion, Alzheimer's disease. Specific brain lesions or removal of it, psychological disassociative fugue, psychogenic migraines, hyperglycemia, epilepsy, electroconvulsive shock therapy, drugs, infection, nutritional deficiency. So Chorstov syndrome results from chronic alcoholism, alcoholism, and can't the quint thiamine deficiency lesions to medial thalamus. No pathology, most sources attribute the amnesia to combined lesions in two dyencephalic structures, the dorsomedial nucleus of the thalamus and the mammillary bodies of the hypothalamus. Generally preserved IQ, including a normal digit span. Personality changes, the most common is which apathy passive passivity and indifference and ability to formulate and follow through a series of plans. Lack of insight into their condition. How can someone with a shattered memory remember that he has become unable to remember? So retrograde amnesia with temporal gradient. You know, antigrade amnesia, confabulation, which is a tendency to fill in the gap of one's memory with plausible made up stories. Confabulations are rare among chronic Chorstov patients who've had the disease for five or more years. Patients in the chronic stage are more likely to say, I don't know, or remain silent when faced with memory failures rather than to invent stories. Worst impairments are an episodic memory test, including lists of learning words, figures and faces. Paragraph recall relatively preserved semantic memory, including normal verbal fluency, vocabulary, rules of syntax and basic arithmetic operations. Intact sensiomotor memory, mirror tracing, mirror reading, pursuit rotor, intact performance on perceptual tasks. Identification generate categorical exemplars, post traumatic amnesia. Damage due to lesions as well as twisting and tearing of microstructure of brain symptomology. After severe traumatic brain injury, individuals typically lose consciousness. After they begin to regain consciousness, there's often a gradual recovery during which patients have difficulty keeping track of and remembering ongoing events. Though there may be islands of lucidity in memory. Retrograde amnesia refers to difficult to remember events that occurred prior to the injury. Duration of amnesia varies, but can extend back for several years, rare, short lived, typically due to brain trauma. Duration of retrograde amnesia typically shrinks as time passes. Russell already nineteen fifty nine described case of traumatic brain injury as a result of a motorcycle accident. One week post accident, patient had lost eleven years of memory extending back from injury. Two weeks post accident, patient had lost two years of memory. After ten weeks post injury, memories of the last two years gradually returned. This pattern results suggest that retrograde amnesia is a retrieval problem. Pattern of damage recovery from most distant to most recent have been argued by some to reflect failure of consolidation, Ribbit's law. So Butters and Kermak in eighty six reported a case study of an eminent scientist who had written his autobiography only two years prior to becoming amnesiac, tested in by asking him questions from all drawn from his autobiography. You see the recall rate was better with older information. Amnesia, anti grade amnesia refers to problems learning new facts specific to episodic memories, procedural memories intact. Implicit memory conform as normal. So famous cases, Henry Malyason, patient HM suffered from extreme epilepsy bilateral mesial temporal lobe resection extending eight centimeters back from the temporal tips, including the unclus and amygdala and destroying the anterior three thirds of the hippocampus and hippocampal gyrus. Prototype of amnesia attributed to hippocampal damage, surgery led to a permanent severe antigrade amnesia, limiting retrograde amnesia. And normal intelligence. Functional characteristics declarative and non declarative memories. Although patient can learn other tasks, they cannot recall ever learning them. Learning and memory involve different processes, two major categories of memories declarative memories, memory that can be verbally expressed such as memory for events, facts or a specific stimuli that is impaired with antigrade amnesia. Non declarative memory memory use formation does not depend on the hippocampal formation. A collective term for perceptual stimulus response of motor memory not affected by antigrade amnesia. These can control behavior cannot always be described in words. Episodic memory is impaired, both autobiographical and non autobiographical episodic memory, even for emotionally charged information such as death. Verbal learning is disrupted and antigrade amnesia. Perceptual learning recognize broken drawings, also faces and melodies. Stimulus response learning can acquire classical conditioned eye blink response. Working memory is intact, essential, normal, short term memory. As seen in the Brown Peterson task, digit span in conversation, semantic memory is spared, procedural memory is intact. So you show a normal procedural implicit memory despite extensive declarative and explicit memory deficits. In particular, shows normal motor priming of pursuit rotor and mirror tracing tasks. See anatomy of antigrade amnesia. Damage to the hippocampus or to regions that supply its inputs and receive its outputs cause antigrade amnesia. The hippocampus form new declarative memories, hippocampus receives info about what is going on from sensory motory associated cortex and from some sub cortical regions. Processes this info into then modifies the memories being consolidated by effort and connections back to the regions experienced that lead to declarative memories activate the hippocampal formation. Hippocampal formation enables us to learn the relationship between the stimuli that were presented at the time of event and then events themselves. Damage to other sub cortical regions that connect with the hippocampus can cause memory impairments. Limbic cortex and medial temporal lobe, semantic memories and memory of facts and general info different from the episodic memory. Destruction of hippocampus alone disrupts episodic memory only must have damage to limbic cortex or medial temporal lobe to also impart impair semantic memory and thus all declarative memory. Phornix and mammillary bodies, patients with Chorstov syndrome suffered degeneration of the memory or bodies where the apparent accents of the phornix terminate in the memory of their bodies. Damage to any part of the neural circuit that includes the hippocamics, phornix, memory and bodies anterior thalamus cause memory impairments. So theoretical implications of amnesia provides evidence for short term versus long term memory distinctions. Supports the notion that there are different systems mediating explicit episodic and implicit procedural memory. May indicate the semantic and episodic memory can be fractioned, may provide insight into nature of consciousness. The Alzheimer's disease cortical progressive dementia, disease associated with the development of neurofibril tangles and plaques. The brain is billions of neurons, each with an accent and many dendrites say healthy neurons must communicate with each other, carry out metabolism and repair themselves. Alzheimer's disease disrupts all three of these essential jobs. So pre clinical Alzheimer's disease signs of Alzheimer's disease are first noticed in the ethinorhinic cortex then proceed to the hippocampus affected regions begin to shrink as nerve cells die. Changes can begin ten to twenty years before symptoms appear. Memory loss is the first sign of Alzheimer's disease. Alzheimer's disease spreads throughout the brain. The cerebral cortex begins to shrink as more and more neurons stop working and die. Mild Alzheimer's disease signs can include memory loss, confusion, trouble handling money, poor judgment, mood changes and increased anxiety. Moderate Alzheimer's disease signs include increased memory loss and confusion, problems recognizing people, difficulty with language and thought. Restlessness, agitation, wandering and repetitive statements. In severe Alzheimer's disease, extreme shrinkage occurs in the brain. Patients are completely dependent on others for care. Symptoms can include weight loss seizures, skin infections, groaning, moaning or grunting, increased sleeping, loss of bladder and bowel control. Death usually occurs from aspiration, pneumonia or other infections caregivers can turn to hospice for help in palliative care. So you see the picture. So the criteria for Alzheimer's disease deficit in two more areas of cognition, at least one which is memory interferes with social or occupational functioning, decline from pre morbid level, gradually progressive course, rule out other causes. The hallmarks of Alzheimer's disease, the brains of people of Alzheimer's disease have an abundance of two abnormal structures. Beta amyloid plaque, dense deposits of protein and cellular material that accumulate outside and around nerve cells. And neurofibrillatory tangles twisted fibers that build up inside the nerve cell. Beta amyloid plaques, amyloid precursors proteins is the precursor to an amyloid plaque. The amyloid precursor protein sticks through the neuron membrane. Enzymes cut the amyloid precursor protein into fragments of protein, including beta amyloid. Beta amyloid fragmites come together and clumps to form plaque. And Alzheimer's disease, many of these clumps from form disrupting the work of neurons. This affects the hippocampus and other areas of the cerebral cortex. Alzheimer's disease, three types of memories problem episodic memory impaired, like free recall, executional function, semantic memory. And note amnesiacs don't have the latter two impairments. So Alzheimer's disease semantic memory. System for storing, organizing, manipulating information pertaining to the meaning of words, concepts and their association conceptualizes broadly distributed network. Enables judgments about the properties and functions of items. Naming and word generation to semantic cues both require semantic memory, both impaired by Alzheimer's disease. Possibly because degradation of semantic networks or loss of access to preserve concepts or both. Recapitulation during retrieval, memory performance depends on the similarity of conditions at encoding to those at retrieval. This finding in memory, others suggest that encoding and retrieval processes are closely related to each other. Widely believe the brain regions activated encoding will tend to be activated retrieval. You get Wheeler two thousand identify region of the brain associated with retrieval of vivid visual and auditory information. Determine the extent to which these regions are associated with the regions activated at the time of encoding. So we did his test. The results, the brain areas of the visual cortex are active during retrieval of memories with visual context. Brain areas and auditory cortex are active during retrieval of memories with auditory content. So sensory aspects and multisensory events are stored in some of the brain's regions that are activated in coding. So this case of EP who suffered acute viral disease in brain damage sustained temporal lobes, notably the hippocampus. Displays antigrade amnesia, short memory, short term memory was intact. Lives in a permanent present. So we got a few other cases of amnesia patients. The possibly could learn different things from neuropsychology and memory consciousness. Toving has proposed that different memory systems have associations with the then different levels of contusy of noetic awareness, episodic memory. Auto noetic self awareness, semantic memory, noetic aware of the information, but not aware of event. Procedural memory, a noetic no conscious awareness. So the neuron action potential, positive chemicals throw flow into the accent, making it positively charged. Causes positive charge to flow down cell to terminal buttons, the myelin sheath helps. Neuropsychology, strong emotions can enhance memory formation retrieval, many compounds to participate. Acetochlorine, epinephrine, nor epinephrine, vasopressin, the opioids, GABA drugs, their agonists or antagonist of these can be involved. You have disassociation, good neuropsychology studies look for disassociation. So the HM had intact working memory, poor ability to recall episodic memories. KF, no problem recalling daily episodes, but digit span of one. So for amnesia, basic, you know, the result of the study with HM. The hippocampus is not the location of long term memory, nor is it necessary for retrieval of long term memory. The hippocampus is not the location for short term memory. The hippocampus is involved in converting short term memory into long term memory. These results are too simple, antigrade amnesia is actually much more complex. Learning consists of at least two stages, short term memory, immediate memory for events which may or may not be consolidated into long term memory can only hold for a limited amount of info. Long term memory relatively stable memory of events that occurred in the more distant past as opposed to short term memory. No limit on amount of info consolidation, the process by which short term memory are converted into long term memory. Okay, very interesting. You know, so finishing, you're rounding out the senses and obviously these could be studied at significantly higher levels to understand what memory is, but the main purpose for my discussion here is trying to understand consciousness. So I got a minion glad to have a minion back, hope. I guess you guys talk about what you want if you're watching the program. So yeah, you're just trying to pound through, I really want to understand this stuff. So it's just a public learning session and I hope other people will will appreciate that. I'm going to continue with memory. Okay, so. We looked at Alzheimer's disease and the last one cortical progressive dementia. Something new. Okay. This is gonna this one's overview for a college exam so it's going to cover an overview of a lot of different stuff hopefully we'll be able to get into more so levels of processing. Study from nineteen seventy two two considered levels of processing at study to be more important for memory than intent to learn levels of processing equals how deeply the item is processed the depth of processing helps determine the durability in long term memory. So you have from shallow to deep you know visual form phonology semantics. And then in seventy five participants viewed words and were asked to make three different types of judgments visual processing phonological semantic finally participants were asked to recognize the words they'd seen before in a surprise test including both old and new words. Transfer appropriate processing seventy seven participants made either a phonological or semantic judgment about each item on the word list. Learning was incidental participants were not told that they would have to later recall the words constraint limits and their learning strategies used I was thinking of going through like some basic memory tricks for improving memory related to the speed reading and I still might do that but you know just trying to understand the modern understanding of scientific memory will probably be more useful to in memory improvement than the memory tricks and then you know when learning the memory tricks we might see why they work I still might do that also. So seventy seven standard recognition test for learned words rhyming recognition test for learned words. So the results standard recognition tests deeper processing led to better performance rhyming recognition test this shallow rhyme based encoding task led to better performance because it matched the demands for the testing situation so people remember things that rhyme. More but less so than things that have some sort of deep connection you know the secret to memory is having a deep connection the take on message is that when the processing at encoded matches like processing at retrieval performance will be better so something when sometimes you want to remember something so you could remember the situation that you studied in and from that situation you could remember it and so it could be the way that the brain encodes is why that's so so only makes sense to talk about a learner's learning method efficiency in the context of the type of title test. So nineteen seventy examined effectiveness of cue had people learn list of strong and weak associates strong versus weak cues. In the study no cue versus weak cue the test no cue weak cue or strong cue. The best retrieval cue for a word like flower would be a strong associated word like bloom fruit is weakly associated to flower and would be unlikely to pull it out Thompson's and Tovling showed that this can be reversed if you change the study context so you know some just the cue to your memory that you give one word and then that word will produce the object of memory. So the famous Ebbinghaus eighteen eighty five already you know hundred thirty years ago the forgetting test rapid forgetting for short delays slower for long delays to where you just have something and within twenty minutes there's a sixty percent chance you you remember it and after a month it's down to twenty percent these studies have been repeated and the value of reviewing that I showed related to speed reading. So what did we forget permestor describing the leveling off of forgetting curve at long delays beyond this point memory appears impervious to further forgetting that at certain point if you remember it past a certain timeframe you're likely to remember it forever. So permestor rapid forgetting of foreign languages for three years then of asymptotes after about two years stays fairly constant even up to fifty years the overall level of retention is determined by the level of initial learning. So permestor nineteen seventy five study tested nearly four hundred high school graduates on the ability to recognize and name classmates after delay of up to thirty years questions recall can you list all your classmates can you name all their faces recognition is this the name of a classmate is this the face of a classmate matching the names and faces? So the results were mixed relatively on impaired ability to recognize their classmates faces and name ability to match up names to the appropriate portraits extensively impaired ability to recall a name given a person's portrait conclusion recall but no recognition of well learned personal material closely follows the forgetting curve first demonstrating by Ebbinghaus. So how do we forget so we have retrograde inference forgetting caused by encoding new traces into memory in between the initial coding of the target and when it is tested introducing a related second list of items and pairs recall of the first list compared to a controlled condition proactive interference the tendency for older memories to interfere with the retrieval of more recent experiences and knowledge the number of previous learning experiences largely determines the rate of forgetting at long delays. So the different memories to tasks of incidental versus intentional direct versus indirect. Some memory without awareness perceptual tasks like word identification word stem completion word fragment completion degraded word naming anagram solution lexical decision nonverbal task picture fragment naming object decision task possible and possible object decision conceptual task word association category instance generation answering general knowledge questions so mixing measures task or not process pure indirect measures of memory may be contaminated by intentional uses of memory. Direct measures may be influenced by unconscious or automatic influences process disassociation procedure was developed to separate automatic unconscious and conscious processes process disassociation procedure. So Jacoby ninety one read a list of words hear a list of words to recognition tests that both tests include the the list that was heard and the list that was read and novel new words inclusion complete task with studied on and or on any item respond old if the word was on either list exclusion complete task with item not studied exclude studied items respond all only if word was on list two. Kind of complicated. Ways that trying to get at different studies are trying to get at what's occurring when memory what's the difference between short term and long term how do we recall memory how is it stored so here's a nice track from Shaker and Tovling ninety four. So if you want to know how to do something you have procedural it could be non declarative your motor skills cognitive skills simple conditioning simple associative learning it could be non conscious operation indirect. Or the automatically recognized thing perceptual representation non declarative visual words forms auditory word form structural description and hopefully I'm going to read some papers very soon on the brain as a predictive machine. Okay, transfer appropriate process eighty nine goal to demonstrate data driven processing can affect direct text data driven processes do not necessarily affect indirect texts. So prediction systems view modality match should affect only indirect test if indirect tap separate systems then modality should affect them in the same way. So the tap view modality match should affect data driven task only. So the results priming effect for data driven tasks only indirect. Fragment completion direct graphemic cue recall not all indirect test display priming effect general knowledge indirect conceptual. They were the same conclusions support view the processing rather than system is what is important. The neuroscience typically study memory in animals can record electrical or chemical signals directly from individual neurons or carefully remove small portions of the brain psychologists typically study memory in humans more limited techniques experiments of nature case studies lesions direct electrical stimulations or imaging techniques so you know more of the neuron dendrite cell body accent myelin chief terminal button synapse billions of synapses. Neurons and memory so habian learning cells that fire together wire together connections between neurons are weighted weights can be changed based on feedback from other cells basic assumption of most computational neural network models. Connectionism. So this was Hebb's nineteen forty nine theory consolidation the experience activate sensory pathways which conduct neural impulse to the central nervous system and then the short term memory have hypothesized the short term memory of each experience is stored by neural activity reverberating closed loop central nervous system circuits long term memory have hypothesized that reverberating activity if maintained for a sufficiently long time produces structural changes in synapses and that these changes facilitate subsequent transmission over the same pathways and the change pathway of transmission produced by the synaptic facilitation can influence motor output and thus behavior. So we looked at the structure of the brain many time good to review these things over and over again pound this in you know talking about memory limbic system controls emotion and instinctual behavior includes the hippocampus and part of the cortex the thalamus receives sensory and limbic information and sends to cerebral cortex the hypothalamus monitors certain activities and controls bodies internal clock the hippocampus where short term memories are converted to long term memories the hippocampus important for formation and new episodic memories important for encoding perceptual aspects of memories novel events places and stimuli important for declarative memory especially as part of medial temporal lobe. Amnesia you know we'd retrograde and anterograde and anterior grade. Signal detection theory recognition recognition accuracy depends on whether a signal noise target memory was actually presented the participants response it's like consciousness okay so our eyes see our ears hear but what actually enters what we would call consciousness? So there are four possible outcomes hits correctly reporting to the present of the signal correct rejections correctly reporting to the absence of the signal in the indirect false alarms incorrectly reporting presence of the signal when it did not occur and misses failure to report the presence of signal when it did occur. So how does recognition work so you got two theories two classes of theories signal process theories retrieval is the one process regardless of task dual process theories two processes needed for retrieval and can be task dependent so dual process theories you have the generate recognize model the GR recalls made up of two processes first generate a set of plausible candidates for recall the generation stage second confirm whether each word is worthy of being recalled the recognition stage not the same as the recognition stage. Recognition tests sorry recognition is made up of only one process because the experimenter provides a candidate recognition does not need to the generation stage. So remember versus no process model relatively recent change in recognition methodology does someone specifically remember conscious recollection of the information occurred at study or just somehow knowing no. Knowing that it was on the list but not having the conscious recollection just a feeling of knowing. To remember no process make the remember no judgment for old items remember consciously recollect details of the items presentation no sure an item was presented but cannot recall any of the details of presentation so remember no differ by picture superiority effect. Word frequency effect in generation effect. Face recognition evidence for special ability. Proso pignasia newborn preference face inversion effect pop out effects for faces. So good stuff further on memory. Okay glad I still got eight people and hope people are gaining and benefiting from this I got one more PowerPoint and then I got some very interesting articles to read so you know now we're coming back to the senses and we're getting a more in detailed scientific understanding of how the senses work this is almost like medicine which you're pretty interesting because you know god forbid people lose their sense of hearing and eyesight with age pretty regularly. Possibly even a majority of the population you know that merits to make it to old age will come to some of these problems if people go into medicine and in the nature of the human being is a lot of these processes we understand through problems that occur from people so as we said the main drivers of the brain is vision and sound. Audio visual processing takes up almost half of the brain. And perception is largely made up of sound and sight that go together well obviously we also have touch and smell that in taste that play a significant role in perception but the main ones is sight. And then on top of that hearing. So we went through this you know the IX much like a camera lens of eye just to bring the object into focus pupil eye constricts to allow light less light to enter in bright setting or dilates to allow more light to enter in dark setting through bending a light rays image reach of the retina sensitive nerve cell layers of an eye image is transmitted to the brain for interpretation. So we have the sclera white portion of the eye the iris and the pupil. More the conjunctivia the thin mucous membrane layer that lines interior part of the eye inner part of eyelids colorless but appears white because it covers sclera the lacrimal gland located upper outer edge of each eye and the lacrimal duct. Eyelids eyelashes eyelid continuous with skin and cover the eyeball keep surface of eyeball lubricated and protected from dust and debris through blinking motion eyelashes located along edges of eyelid help protect eyeball by preventing foreign materials and or insects from coming in contact with the surface of the eyeball. You know sclera the white of the eye thinnest over anterior service the eye thickest in the back of the eye near opening for optic nerve the cornea continues anterior portion of sclera transparent non vascular layer covering colored part of the eye. The conjunctival mucous membrane lining immer inner surface of the eyelid and outer surface of the eye the choroid vascular middle layer of eye just beneath the sclera contains extensive capillaries that provide blood supply for nutrients to the eye contains iris salatory barrier and suspensory ligaments. So iris is the colored portion of the eye can be seen through transparent cornea layer the pupil located at the center of the iris controls amount of light entering eye in the lens colorless bicarbonate structure that aids in focusing images clearly on retina. Siliary body located in each side of the lens contains muscles responsible for adjusting lens to view near objects suspensory ligaments radiate from siliary body and attach to lens whole engine place assist in adjusting shape of lens for prosper focusing of eye. The retina sensitive layers of the cell layer changes energy of light rays into nerve impulses transmit nerves impulses via optic nerve to brain for interpretation of image seen by eye nerve cells of retina rods are responsible for vision and dim light and for peripheral vision cones responsible for visualizing colors central vision and vision in bright light the retina the macular luteina oval yellow spot near center of retina the fovea centrale small depression located within macular luteina sharpest image obtained when image focuses directly on the fovea centrale central vision. The optic nerve receives impulses from the retina and transmits them to the brain images are then interpreted as vision the optic disc contains no rods or cone known as the blind spot in the eye center of optic disc serves as point of entry for entry that supplies retina. So anterior cavity of the eye interior chamber located in front of lens filled with clear watery fluid called aqueous humor posterior chamber located behind lens also filled with aqueous humor flows back and forth between both chambers posterior cavity of the eye posterior lens filled with vitreous humor clear jelly like substance that gives shape to the eyeball not constantly reproduced blindness can result of vitreous humor escapes from eye. Process begins as light rays enter eye transmitted through cornea aqueous humor pupil lens and vitreous humor to retina sensitive nerve cells of retina transmit image through optic nerve to brain brain interprets image as vision. Refraction process of bending of light rays as they pass through the various structures of the eye to produce a clear image of the retina errors of refraction occur when eyeball is abnormally shaped occur when lens has lost ability to accommodate the near vision vision will be blurred can be adjusted with corrective lenses. So here pathological conditions of the eye to have astigmatism. Is the refraction refractive error causing light rays entering the eye to be focused irregularly on the retina due to an abnormally shaped cornea the correction contact lenses or eyeglasses to neutralized effect. Blepharitis inflammation of the eyelid margin stemming from subaritic allogric or bacteria origins. Blepharotasis. Occurs when the eyelid partially or entirely covers the eye as a result of weakened muscle. Blindness absence of vision or need for assistive device and or assistance from others to accomplish daily activities due to inability to see. Monochromatism color blindness inability sharply perceive visual colors daltonism inability to distinguish between greens and reds achromatic vision cannot distinguish any color perceives only white gray and black your cataract lens in the eye becomes progressively cloudy losing its normal transparency altered perception of the images due to inference on light transmission to retina. Calazian cyst or nodal on eyelid resulting from an. Collazion cyst or nodal on eyelid resulting from obstruction of the meombamic gland which is responsible for lubricating margin of the eyelid. Congrativus acute inflammation of the mucous membrane lining the eyelids and covering the front part of the eyeball also called pink eye. Corneal abrasion disruption of the corneal surface epithelium commonly caused by eyelash, a small foreign body contact lenses or scratch from a fingernail. Diabetic retinopathy condition occurs as a consequence of an eight to 10 year duration of diabetes melitus in which the capillaries of retina experience scarring causes the retinal capillary scarring abnormal dilation and construction of vessels, hemorrhages, microaneurysms, abnormal formation of new vessels causing leakage of blood into the virtuous humor, leakage causes permanent decline in sharpness of vision. Ekthropian turning out or aversion of eyelash margins, the eyeball leading to exposure of the eyelid and eyeball surface and lining occurs especially in the lower eyelid. Entropian turning in of the eyelash margins resulting in the sensation similar to that of foreign body in the eye, redness, tearing, burning and itching occurs especially in lower margins. Exophthalmia abnormal protrusions of the eyeball usually with the sclera noticeable over the iris typically due to expanded volume of orbital contents. Glaucoma ocular disorder identified as a group due to the increase in intro ocular pressure. Glaucoma chronic open angle glaucoma primary disorder breakdown and drainage system of the circulation of aqueous humor, gradual elevation of internal pressure leads to the decreased blood supply to optic nerve and retina peripheral vision is gradually lost when untreated. If you close angle, brow coma mouth of drainage system is narrow and closes completely allowing no flow of aqueous humor, rapid occurrence characterized by severe pain, blurred vision, proto phobia, redness and seeing halos around light. If untreated, person can lose his or her sight within several days. Hemanopia loss of vision or blindness in one half of the vision field. Hordiolum bacteria infection of the eyelash follicle or sebaceous gland originating with redness swelling and mild tenderness in margin of eyelash. Hyperopia refractive error in what the lens of the eye cannot focus on image accurately results in blurred vision due to light rays focus behind the retina because eyeball is shorter than normal, also called farsightedness. So hyphema or hyphemia bleed into anterior chamber of eye resulting as a postoperative complication or from a blunt eye injury. Carotitis choroid inflammation caused by microorganism trauma to eye break in sensory innervation of cornea hypersensitivity reaction or tearing defect maybe due to dryers or ineffective eyelid closure. Myopia refractive error in which the lens of the eye cannot focus on the image accurately resulting in blurred distant vision due to light rays focused in front of the retina because eyeball is no longer than normal, also known as near sightedness. Nictalopia night blindness inadequate vision at night or in faint lighting following reduction in synthesis of rod option compound and rod of retina that enables the eye to adjust to low density light. Nystagmus vertical horizontal rotary or mixed rhythmic involuntary movements of the eye caused by use of alcohol or certain drugs lesions on the brain or inner ear congenial abnormalities, nerve injury at birth or abnormal retinal development. Ophthalmia neonatorum prurient contains pus inflammation of conjunctivia and corneal newborn cause of the carotis and conjunctivus results from newborn's exposure to viral bacterial chemical or chlamydic agents. Presbyopia refractive error occurring after age 40, lens of the eye cannot focus on image accurately due to loss of elasticity, also called farsightedness due to better clarity of distant objects. Petirgium irregular growth developing as a fold in the conjunctivia usually on nasal side of the cornea disrupts vision if it extends over pupil can be caused by allergies or excessive ultraviolet light exposure. Retinal detachment partial or complete splitting away the retina from the pigmented visceral layer called the choroid interrupting vascular supply of the retina thus creating a medical emergency. Retinal tear opening of the retina that allows leakage of virtuous humor. Scleritis scleritis presence of inflammation in the white outside covering the eyeball, the sclera symptoms include intense redness with dull plane and possibly some loss of vision. Scotoma defined area in one or both eyes decrease visual function. Shrubismus.